Okay, I'd like to make a motion to exit executive session and return to public session. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, second. Questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Here it goes. Good evening, and welcome to Antioch High School. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I do have a very, a fairly lengthy presentation with all the topics that you requested, so I apologize for the lengthiness of the presentation. But I did say at the last meeting that I was at that before I did that, I was going to brag about a few, a few students. So with me tonight, I'd really like to introduce our valedictorian and our salutatorian. A valedictorian come up here is DeKemi Sonno Knolls. And our, and our salutatorian is Maeve Turk. So typically what we do is we ask you guys to kind of talk a little bit about, you know, what Antioch High School has meant to you and what the district has meant to you. So, all right, don't panic. I'm just gonna show a video of an interview that they did. Okay. Sir, for some reason, I'm not presenting here. It's not what I see on my screen. It's not moving. Yep, there we go. Thing was delayed.
Yeah, you've got to present.
Nope, it's fine. Nope, it's fine. Okay. Here we go.
My name is DeKemi Sonno Knolls, and I'm the valedictorian of the senior class of 2023. I went to Woodstock Elementary School. Since seventh grade, I've been a member of the varsity tennis team, and I am the team captain this year in third singles. I am a member of the National Honor Society, a member of Harvard Model Congress. I'm a member of the National Honor Society, a member of Harvard Model Congress, a member of Science Olympiad, president of the Philosophy Club, and a member of the Wind and Jazz Ensemble. I have taken eight AP level courses, starting with AP European History, AP US History, AP Environmental Science, AP Computer Science, AP Language and Composition. And I am currently taking AP Government, AP Calculus, and AP Chemistry. Currently, I'm taking Spanish 202. I think my favorite class of my high school career has been philosophy class with Mr. Kalivas. And an honorable mention is AP Calculus with Mrs. Mora, because she makes math fun. My advice for incoming freshmen is to remember to have fun. It's important to keep up with these studies, of course, and always work hard to achieve good grades and all that. But you always have to remember to enjoy your youth and enjoy your high school years, because before you know it, it's gonna be gone. And really remember to always be kind and always be friendly and just enjoy the time you have with your loved ones. My advice for my teachers would be to always be encouraging. Always try and make your classroom a safe environment and really try and connect with each and every one of your students. The best thing about Ontario, I would say, is the education. I believe that the teachers here and the classes here are some of the best in the county. And I truly believe that my success would not have come without my teachers' help and my classes' help. I truly believe that Ontario has some of the best education offered. The most important thing about my learning experience has been connecting with my teachers. Being able to have that level of friendship and connection with my teachers and being able to talk to them about my work and even just about my personal life has really been able to lead me to success. I've only applied to one college, Brown University, and that was early decision. I will have a concentration in chemistry with a minor concentration in music. My long-term plans include getting a bachelor's degree and/or a master's degree and just something within the field of science. And potentially, this is very far in the future, but I'm slightly interested in obtaining a PhD as well. But most importantly, I just hope to be surrounded by people I love and always be with friends. My favorite school lunch at Ontario is a meatball sub.
That's an important question also. That's always asked. And our salutatorian?
Hello, my name is Maeve Turk, and I am the salutatorian of the class of 2023 at Ontario High School. I attended Bennett Elementary for grades kindergarten and first grade, and then I went to Woodstock Elementary for grades second and third, and then back to Bennett for the rest of my elementary education. I have participated in field-
My name is Dikemi-
Hello, my name is Maeve Turk, and I am the salutatorian of the class of 2023 at Ontario High School. I attended Bennett Elementary for grades kindergarten and first grade, and then I went to Woodstock Elementary for grades second and third, and then back to Bennett for the rest of my elementary education. I have participated in field hockey throughout my middle school and high school career. I am the co-editor in chief of the Ontario Literary Magazine. I am a member of Harvard Model Congress. I am in NHS, and I am the stage manager for the school musical. I'm also the co-vice president of the Ontario Spanish Club. I have taken AP Human Geography, AP Psychology, AP European History, APUSH, AP Computer Science, AP Language, and then this year I am taking AP Chemistry and AP Government. And college-level courses, I have taken English 101 and 102, and I have taken Spanish 201 and 202. I think my favorite class has definitely been AP Psychology, just because that was the class that helped me figure out what I want to do in college. And the most difficult course I've had to take is definitely AP Chemistry, just because the material is very difficult to understand. I would definitely encourage freshmen to reach out to their teachers individually and try to have as many conversations with them before or after or during class and just make those personal connections with your teachers, 'cause that's how I have gotten as much academic and personal growth throughout my high school career has been through those conversations with, with my teachers. And yeah, just talk to your teachers. They're people too. For teachers, I would say, yeah, just try to connect with your students. Be there and be receptive if they try to talk to you about their grades or about how to see growth. Just be available to discuss with them and be available to like get to know them and help them grow on like that personal and academic level. I think that Ontario really creates a very like strong community here. And I think that it also, for such a small school and especially for a public school, we're really able to have such a wide array of both AP and like college level, like those difficult courses, as well as have a really good range of extracurriculars that aren't offered at every other public school. So I think that's something that our school has worked really hard to do, and that's one of my favorite things about it. Yeah, I applied early decision one to Vassar College in November, and I got in. So that was really the only college that I focused most of my efforts on. I'm planning on majoring in neuroscience and behavior. I'm not quite sure how my entire future is going to go, but I would like to continue as far as I can academically and just try to find a career that I think suits me and makes me happy. I think I'm gonna go with a classic and say that my favorite school lunch is a grilled cheese.
Okay, just so you know, usually it's consistently the grilled cheese, so. It is. So I wanted to, I wanted to just say again how impressed I am with, with both, with both of our students. And they're great examples of students who have taken advantage of so many of the activities that we have to offer, so many of the AP and college-level classes. And they're so insightful. I know our teachers are really gonna be happy to listen to what their comments are and the advice that they've given to our teachers and to our students as well. So with that, we'll see them on the stage, well, a few more times. But again, I offer my congratulations, and I want them to get out of here because I know they have schoolwork that they need to take care of tonight. So again, congratulations. So just a couple of other things I'd like to mention before I get into answering some of the questions that you guys had put towards me. I, I wanted to congratulate the senior, the senior class and the senior class officers. And unfortunately, my notes aren't up here anymore. But they had their senior prom on May 6th. It was, it was, it was really awesome. They had 102 guests come to the prom. There were 72 out of our 82 seniors attended. There was so much, so much energy and so much camaraderie. It was just, it was an absolute pleasure to chaperone the prom. In fact, the manager made it a point to say to me, he didn't even need to be at this prom. It was one of the best high school proms, best behaved kids, the most polite kids that, that they've seen there. And that, that's really, that's really a credit to this community, the parents, and, and to the students. Unfortunately, the board rep isn't here, 'cause I was gonna embarrass her because she, she, Noelle Crandell actually, and her, and her boyfriend actually were the royalty for the, for the prom. So, but you could just see, there was just so much energy. It was, it was awesome. A couple of other things I wanted to mention. This year, we were, we were awarded by New York State Ed Department with a new Bilinguality Seal, and this is actually for being a veteran. This seal was issued to, there's roughly about a hundred, 100 public high schools that, that received this, and it's for having the Bilinguality Seal for five or more years. They did a wonderful job with this, the World Languages Department, that is. The Seal of Bilinguality recognizes high school graduates who have attained a high level of proficiency in Engli-, in English and one or more world languages. There's a pretty comprehensive rubric and presentations that the students have to, have to go through in order to get this seal, and it's, it's a notation on the diploma and, and on the transcript. This year, we have 21 students who will be receiving that seal, and, and they did a fabulous job. And thank you to the World Languages Department, because they really made it happen. The other thing I wanted to mention on the lines of seals is that there is a New York State Seal of Civic Readiness. We applied last year to be able to pilot it in this current school year, and we were actually awarded the ability to, to issue, to issue the seal at the end of the year. Again, this is a pilot for this year. The Seal of Civic Readiness is a formal recognition that a student has attained a high proficiency, high level of proficiency in terms of civic knowledge, civic skills, civic mindset, and civic experiences. The Seal of Civic Readiness provides a distinction, just like the Seal of Bilinguality, goes on the student's transcript, and there's a special seal that goes on the diploma. There's roughly, there's roughly 1,520, I believe, high, public high schools in New York State. About 370 or so were given the opportunity to pilot the seal for this year. So I'm really, I'm really happy with that. Just like the Bilinguality Seal, there is a rubric. I kind of gave you a little sampling of what, of what the rubric is. They have to attain six points on this rubric, and they have to demonstrate civic knowledge and civic participation. And it's, it's a lot more comprehensive than what I'm, that, what I put up on the screen. But this year, we'll have 20 students who will end up with that seal. Next year, just looking at what we've done this year and watching kids go through the pilot, you know, we believe that, you know, we, we could potentially, you know, double, double that number because we offer so many courses that'll satisfy some of the points on this, on this rubric. So we're really looking forward to doing that. Okay, now to get on to some of the topics that you guys, that you guys wanted me to address. The first one was, was our, was our special, a teacher on special assignment. And Mr. Harkin's gonna join me tonight. You're not getting away, so you, you come up. So, so the second half of this school year, we kind of recognized that, that students needed some additional instruction in some specific areas. And one of the big areas that we were struggling with was responsible online behavior. And responsible online behavior takes a whole bunch of different topics. It, it's not just, it's not just things like cyberbullying. It's about using technology responsibly. Even starting off, even starting off, if I went around the table right now and said, you know, how many of you use the same password for different sites? I'm pretty sure that you, you use your same password for multiple sites, whether it's banking, whether it's, you know, credit card bills or whatever. So it, it, it's not just about the bullying aspect. But anyway, we, we recognize that as technology, you know, takes off, and it's taken off, we need to provide a little bit more instruction. So in looking at this, we identify, we identified a teacher who was available, which is Mr. Harkin. And, you know, we, we selected Mr. Harkin for, for a bunch of reasons why we approached him. One, we knew he had a great relationship with students. He's extremely approachable. Again, students love him. And with all due respect, he's a lot closer to their age, so he kind of, so he kind of gets the, the social media, because as much as we try to keep up with it, I, I don't understand half the things that, that go on, and I'm pretty good with technology. So, you know, we ran this by Mr. Harkin and the district superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the board were very supportive. We started taking a look at various resources, some of them research-based, some of it that we pulled off the, off the internet that we thought were relevant. And we started creating somewhat of a curriculum. Our plan was that all high school students would receive this type of instruction during their social studies classes. The social studies department was awesome. They, they agreed to, to allow Mr. Harkin to come into the classrooms. And for middle school students, we wanted to push this down to middle school as well. They received instruction, if they were seventh grade, through Home and Careers, and in eighth grade, through technology classes. The feedback has been extremely positive by our teachers, social studies teachers who have observed the lessons, and by, and by the students. One of the things that we do is we constantly measure, you know, how students are progressing through the classes. And we continuously have, have met, and we've continuously changed the curriculum to meet the needs and, and the feedback that the students gave us. So one of the things we do is we created a survey. And it was totally optional, so no one was forced to do it. I'm gonna show you some of the slides that helped guide us. We had about 304, so that's about, it's, it's roughly about, I would say about 56%. I don't have my notes in front of me, of the student body who agreed to take the survey. And you could see that it's just distributed, you know, fairly, you know, equally among the different grade levels. So it did give us good feedback. One of the things we wanted to know is if they've experienced or seen or experienced bullying on social media. Not to our surprise, about 65% of our students reported that they, they've experienced this or have seen bullying on social media. So that was obviously a huge topic that we continuously spoke about. We wanted to know if, while Mr. Harkin was presenting, if, if they were finding the, the lessons useful and, and if they learned anything new. And by the way, students could be brutally honest, especially when they're anonymous surveys. But, so we were really pleased to find that about 77% of our students really found, found the material useful. Interesting, and one of the questions that we had asked, you know, about whether, is there a specific grade level that this really should be targeted to or geared towards? It was very interesting that the majority of the students really pushed us to say, and this is from follow-up from the question, is, you know, we really have to start, we have to start early. Once you get into the high school years and you get into the older grade levels, it's, it's, a lot of those behaviors already exist, and it's, it's, it's hard to, to break some of those. So, you know, it was, it was really evident that, you know, if this, if this program continues, our focus has to be more emphasis on the, on the lower grade levels. And then we were just curious. We, we wanted to know if students wanted this for next year? And, and, you know, is this something that we should be revisiting every year? And again, to, to our surprise, and not, it's not disrespecting, you know, the teacher did a great job, but, you know, it was really interesting that about 81% of the students really wanted this, wanted this type of instruction to, to continue. So roughly about, say about, well, about three weeks ago, we kind of changed our focus. And the reason we did this is because while we were providing all of this additional instruction on responsible online behavior, we saw the issue of e-cigarettes and vaping really start to, to, to increase. I mean, we had, we had, we had a lot of concerns, and parents had some concerns, what was going on, not just in the school, in the community, you know, in the world, I hate to say it. But, you know, we realized that we had to provide some additional instruction for, for students. So what we did was, we, we met again, and we started taking a look at various resources, and we started pushing in. And I probably should have mentioned that through the, from the responsible online behavior, each student received roughly five, five sessions. So we thought after five sessions, it was all right to, to move on to another topic. Now, because I, because we have a captive audience, we wanted, we wanted to play a video, which all the kids have seen, but it was a really good talking point. It's a video that we're going to put on our website. But if you don't mind just indulging me, I, I'd like to, I'd like to show this to you so you can understand the gravity. I'm sure you already do, but I think this emphasizes it. This is gonna work, right, Joris? This is going to work, right, Joris?
People have been smoking for at least seven thousand years, but it wasn't until the eighteen hundreds that cigarettes became the smoke of choice, after machines were developed to mass produce them. Two hundred years later, in two thousand and three, the electronic cigarette was invented in China. And since then, the use of e-cigarettes, also called vaping, has grown exponentially around the world. E-cigarettes are electronic devices that vaporize a flavored liquid. They all used to look like cigarettes, but now they come in many shapes and sizes. Many look like pens or small boxes called mods. What they all have in common is, one, a power source, usually a lithium battery; two, an atomizer, which heats the e-liquid; three, e-liquid or e-juice, which usually contains flavors of nicotine; and four, a cartridge or tank which is filled with e-liquid. Heating the e-liquid creates a cloud of vapor that looks like smoke, but without a lot of the lethal components contained in tobacco smoke. Many people assume e-cigarettes are safer than traditional cigarettes because they don't burn anything or create tar in your lungs. But it took almost seven thousand years for humans to realize that tobacco causes lung cancer, throat and mouth cancer, causes heart attacks and strokes, and damages the lungs. E-cigs, meanwhile, have only been around a little over a decade, so there just hasn't been enough time to figure out what effects they'll have on your body. We do know that e-cigarettes deliver nicotine, just like the traditional cigarettes, causing increased heart rate and blood pressure. Nicotine also has powerful effects on the brain. It releases rewarding neurotransmitters in the brain, like dopamine, and changes brain chemistry. It is a stimulant, making people feel more alert, but when it goes away, people crave it even more. It can interfere with the body's own natural ability to make dopamine, and soon, the user needs nicotine just to feel normal. The developing brain of teenagers is the most vulnerable to these effects. The powerful addictive nature of nicotine is so high that it's comparable to heroin and cocaine. Besides nicotine, e-cigarettes contain chemical solvents. When heated very high by some of the new e-cigarette devices, these solvents can be transformed into formaldehyde, which is a carcinogen. It causes cancer. These observations are concerning, but we really do not know what the long-term effects from inhaling these chemicals in your lungs will be. E-cigs contain many other chemicals to generate enticing flavors. In fact, there are almost eight thousand different flavors available today, so we don't know very much about many of them. We do know that some of the butter flavorings contain diacetyl, which is famous for causing popcorn lung. Popcorn lung is a disease called bronchiolitis obliterans, which is basically an irreversible scarring and destruction of the delicate lung tissue that can kill you. Strawberry and other healthy-sounding fruit flavors have been found to be cytotoxic and potentially cancer-causing as well. Vaping devices, or specifically the lithium batteries inside them, may explode unpredictably. Although uncommon, this happens frequently enough that e-cigarettes have been banned from luggage on airplanes. Unpredictable explosions have occurred in people's faces and mouths and resulted in serious injuries, including blindness. With these potential risks of e-cigarettes, the addictive nicotine, the exploding batteries, the carcinogenic liquids, why would any company want you to use them? Sales of e-cigarettes approach eight billion dollars per year and are increasing. The truth is, tobacco cigarettes kill about fifty percent of people who use them. So tobacco companies, known as big tobacco, need to keep recruiting young people to become addicted in order to stay in business. Here are some actual documented quotes from tobacco executives. "We don't smoke that [BLEEP]. We just sell it. We reserve the right to smoke for the young, the poor, and the stupid." "The base of our business is the high school student. The fragile self-image of the young person needs all the support it can get. Smoking may appear to enhance that self-image." Studies show that when people start to smoke in their teens, they become addicted and stay smokers as they grow older, even those who swear they will never become addicted. Many of the same strategies that big tobacco used to hook your grandparents into smoking tobacco cigarettes have simply been modified and are being used today with an e-cig in place of a tobacco cig. E-cigarettes come in candy and dessert flavors like Skittles, Gummy Bears, and Vanilla Cupcake, directly aimed at teens. Ads always show thin, beautiful people vaping. Even the strategic use of humor is being successfully used to get customers on their side. The bottom line is that we are all faced with important personal choices every day. We don't yet know everything we need to know to make informed decisions about many things, but we can resist being manipulated. Take your time in making your own personal decisions. It can make all the difference.
It truly amazes us how many students don't understand what's in these things and what their risks are. And it's even more surprising when we speak to parents that they're not aware of how dangerous these products are. So I hope you can understand why we decided to shift our focus a little bit and started addressing this a little bit in a more targeted fashion. So, you know, a lot, we did the same thing. We tried to monitor how the sessions were were going with students. We used a a survey to help guide us. You have to be careful about the data from the survey because, as we suspected, students were a little bit more reluctant to talk about the vaping, obviously because, you know, you're in school and, you know, you're going to get, you're going to get yourself in trouble if you're, you know, vaping and people don't want to label themselves as a vapor. But most of, all these surveys were anonymous, but we we kind of used them really more to help guide a conversation. So don't read too much into the data. So, you know, when asked, only about two hundred and eighty students so far have taken this survey. When you take a look at how many students have ever used e-cigarettes before, we find that, you know, twenty, about twenty-nine percent of the respondents said that they have, they have used it. Now, again, we don't know if we had six hundred, almost six hundred kids in the building. We don't know if only two eighty did. We don't know with those three hundred and twenty, if they were non-vapors or what. So don't read too much into the data, but it's still alarming. You know, do you feel pressure to use these cigarettes? We have about fifteen percent of students say that they they do feel pressure to use these products. When asked if they've ever smoked in school before, eleven point four percent admitted that they have smoked on school property. When asked why they decided to vape, you know, it's, it's friends were doing it. Pair pressures a little bit, was defined a little bit different than friends were doing it, although you could kind of make, you know, the same argument, something to do, enjoy how it feels. So these are, these are some, some pretty, some pretty scary numbers as far as I'm concerned. We did follow up on some of the instruction yesterday and today. We had Ulster County's Oracle come in and do presentations for all the students. Students received instruction from Oracle during their PE classes. And that was coordinated by Mr. Harkin and also our social worker, Mrs. Shanker. And then on May twenty-sixth, we're following up with the ninth graders. We're going to have an assembly from the Ryan Organization, which is raising your awareness about narcotics. And that's going to focus a little bit more on opioid addiction. So, you know, we're, we're trying, we're trying to do a lot. We, you know, we, we kind of put this together quickly, but with intent. So I just hit you with, like, a lot of information. So Brandon, Mr. Harkin got away with not having to to do all the presentations, so I'm kind of hoping that you hit him with a couple of questions. Or not, I mean, I can move on.
Oh, Brandon. Come on back. First, thank you, Mr. Edelman, because you know that the board has a tremendous amount of concern about the vaping that's happening in the, in the school. I think there's an, potentially, an interest in correlation between children who are willing to take the survey and those who may be vaping. I think that we all have a lot of concerns about some of these things, and we're really glad that you're focusing specifically on the vaping. I'm curious if any of the other trustees have questions for Mr. Harkin? Mr. Wallace?
I just wondered if part of your work involves the sources that kids use and how they, and there's the sources for information that they use. And if you talk about what's a credible source of information compared to some of the information that might come from corporations, for instance, or from, you know, less credible sources, let's just put it that way.
Are you talking about online responsible behavior? Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were in context.
Yeah, so that has, in the survey, they had a chance to speak openly about topics they wanted covered. And that was one of them, about how do I understand what's real, what could be fake? I haven't yet gotten to that topic, but I will say recently, we've had conversations about online artificial intelligence when it comes to like ChatGPT and understanding what that means. So it's definitely part of the conversation, but not the focus, I'd say. But it's definitely a topic that kids are interested in as well.
Trustee Story.
This is actually for Principal Edelman. With the Seal of Civic Readiness, last year at rural schools, they had, I went to a, a whole session on this, this topic. And it was ran by somebody from SED that had come down and did a presentation to us. They said that this seal will be most likely mandatory. SED will require it. I see we're, you know, we are piloting this, but are we going, are we planning on continuing on with this? Or has SED only given us one-year pilot? Where are they with that?
No, so, so we're approved, we're approved for next year, and actually, the following year, they, they, they give you that, that two year, that additional two years. Our, our department really feels that we could continue this and get even more kids involved. And in fact, you know, as we start looking at our curriculum in the future, there are opportunities for kids to start accruing points, even at the middle school level, depending on what we do with that, with that curriculum. So, you know, our elective offerings, and I'm not talking about just the AP, I'm talking about a lot of our other electives, really fit into this. The one big piece is the culminating project, which, you know, we really feel like we could be working with the English department and making this extremely easier. Also, just, just to add on to what you're saying, I, I didn't see about the mandating, but I do see that it is going to be another pathway for graduation. So, like, we're, we're excited, like, we know this is going to expand next year, and we, you know, we're, we're enthusiastic about it. I mean, it's great to get, to get kids, you know, involved in civics and make it easier for them to to get this seal, and we just think it's awesome.
Has there been any discussion with Ms. Goldbeck about whether or not some of her end-of-year projects would be appropriate for the Seal of Civic Readiness? I'm thinking about Liam, specifically, like, students like Liam who are doing specifically civics projects, wondering if there might be a tie-in.
It's been used.
Awesome.
Yeah, we were able to, we were able to fit that in.
Great, terrific.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Any other questions? Trustee Bishop?
I'm just curious, what, what do you need from the board to, to make sure that the the project that Mr. Harkin is working on now can continue?
I just think your continued, just your continued support. I think that I, I don't, I don't sense from the board at all that, that anyone disagrees that this is a very important topic. So, you know, we're, we're going to take a look and see, you know, how this, how this fits in with our program next year. We'd also like to see this integrated a little bit more throughout the curriculum with different topics, because just hearing it from one person is, is not enough. It's great, it sets, it sets a tone. But, you know, we all have to be on board because this is, this is a community, this is a community issue. It's a societal issue, and it's, it's, it's really, it's really scary what's, what's out there. Do you want to add to that, or?
I just have one more question. What is the, what is the impact on the students when they see that video? How do they react?
So, that video was part of the Oracle presentation that they've done the past few days. But I've shown in my own presentation similar videos. I would say, personally, having done and seen, gone through so many presentations with the kids, I would say more people paid attention, were more focused when it got to vaping versus social media. I think there's parts of the social media that really stood out to the students, but I think especially for the younger grades, right? We did as seventh graders, we, we did this presentation, and I would say seven, eight, nine were kind of, like, not sure, their friends maybe have heard of it, they might not be using it, but they, it was very much a shock value to them. And I would say the seniors, I see some seniors here, the seniors are very open, and they're much more willing to engage and have the conversation. And many, I'm going to be careful here, many of the seniors, like, we said about thirty percent, the seniors said that number is well over, like, fifty, sixty, even as high as like seventy-five percent of students have ever used it. So it's definitely a very important topic, and I think, yeah, it needs to be focused
Mr. Harkin? Oh, trustee.
Thank you. It was actually a question, actually for Mr. Edelman or potentially for the board. I'm just wondering if you could give me context on the creation of a TOSA and how that was
Again, we, we were looking at things that were going on within the community and within the school. And, you know, I, you know, we heard feedback from the board also, so really, you know, we, we were thinking of different ideas to try to push in some additional lessons. And we, you know, we came up with the idea of, you know, utilizing a teacher who students already have a relationship with. We saw that, you know, Mr. Harkin was, was a, was a point six, he was a part-time teacher. And we said, well, what a, what a, what a great idea to maybe, you know, utilize him since there's familiarity. So really, we went to Ms. McLaren and Mrs. Laffin, and we said, look, we have, we have this idea. And, I mean, they jumped right on it, it was like, this is, this is something we, we should do. It may, it really makes sense. And, you know, spoke with Mr. Harkin more, and we just, we just went for it. And we had your support, which we're grateful for. Did I miss any steps, Ms. McLaren?
I think you covered it, but I think one of the really important things is that Mr. Harkin had a positive relationship with our kids already. So if you're going to bring someone in to have these conversations, it has to be someone that the students respect and trust and will have those conversations with, because I think we've all sat, as young people possibly sat in classrooms with adults that we didn't have a relationship with, who tried to deliver important lessons, and it's a different experience. So I think everybody was very supportive of, of expanding Mr. Harkin's role with us to fill this need because it seemed like a really good place for him and the use of his skills and relationships.
Trustee Sherry. Question for the superintendent, actually. Do we have plans on next year pushing this down into Bennett?
We haven't really discussed it, unless you had plans, that I don't know.
No, we have not discussed it in instructional cabinet yet, how to further push this resource down, but we certainly will be.
And I, I think that the research on this is pretty clear, and it, and it mirrors what the students are telling us, that seventh and eighth grade is, if not earlier, the place to start. Mr. Harkin, I'm sure that you know that there's a tremendous amount of research out there on big tobacco and the ways that they've influenced kids over the last five decades. There is a, a lot of information from the Reality Check Program that used to operate in New York State that got unfunded, you know, around two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, but had done tremendous work in dealing with, at that time, was a smoking cigarette issue. And I believe that they are trying to get the program restarted, but there are tons of resources out there. And I just really want to commend you because the students really love working with you. And, and I think that that's a big part of this, that what Superintendent McLaren said is absolutely true. If the fit is not right, then the message is not received. And you've done a tremendous job making sure that the students feel safe with you, feel comfortable with you, and are able to connect with you in a way where they're honest. And without their honesty, there's no way for us, the board, the staff, the faculty, to address what is clearly a huge issue in this district and in every district. So truly thank you for being willing to take the TOSA position. I hope that you will take it again next year, and I hope that the board will approve it next year. And I'd love to see us figure out a way to push this down into seventh and eighth grade and, and really get this started where it should be. Ms. Laffin?
I just wanted to add that we do have a curriculum Too Good for Drugs that we use at the elementary school. So, this has been a new creation that Principal Edelman and Mr. Harkin have worked on. And I just want to commend them for that, particularly our salutatorian and valedictorian. If you notice, what they mentioned in their advice was the importance of those relationships. And I think that pairs really well with Mr. Harkin's ability to be open and to speak with students in that way. So, you know, originally, this was a response to a request, a need, something that we were seeing with our students, particularly at the high school level in previous years. And then again, the ability to kind of shift in as need arises. So, I appreciate the work that you guys have done to be responsive and nimble when it comes to supporting students in that way.
Last question or point of topic is, and you don't have to answer this right now, but I'd like to know if there is Narcan available in the building and who we have trained to use Narcan. We have had an uptick in young deaths from fentanyl over the last couple of months. It was obviously a huge problem in the district in 2015, 2016. And I think with fentanyl on the rise, it would not shock me to see our small rural communities getting really impacted by it. So, the question.
Sure. Our nurses do have Narcan available to them. Using Narcan in a school setting is a little bit different than using it outside of school, at least during the instructional day, because it does have to be prescribed by our medical director.
Which would not preclude you from using it on a student who needed it, I assume, right?
No, the nurses can use it as needed. But you can't just walk into a, like, general public or a general teacher can't walk in with Narcan.
Understood, thank you. Trustee Wallace.
Is it possible to expand the use of Narcan to staff who might be trained as EMTs and/or first responders?
We would have to run that by our medical director, because there are pretty strict rules about the use of Narcan within the school setting and who could administer. And, yeah, it is a, there is a, there's a lot that goes into that.
Trustee Sherry. I do know that the nurses have it in their emergency bags, which are right there, accessible to either nurse, and they're never away at the same time. So, there's always somebody available that can do it.
Excellent, thank you. Does anybody else have questions for Mr. Harkin or Mr. Edelman? Thank you both so much.
Okay, I have more, though.
Oh, Mr. Edelman, go ahead.
You guys really gave me a lot, so.
It's been a long year.
I could stop if you want me to, it's fine. No, okay. Okay, so one of the other areas I was asked to talk about briefly was about building safety and security. So, safety and security is something that's really challenging to talk about in public, because, you know, we never want to, we never want to really talk about, you know, what our vulnerabilities are, or what our protocols or responses are. So, what I will share with you is that we do have a function. At the middle school, high school, we have a combined safety crisis team. It's a multidisciplinary team. There's a lot of people on it, from administrators to social workers, school counselors, psychologists, nurses, regular ed teachers, and also special education teachers. It doesn't mean that all those people are going to be involved in every single incident. However, based on whatever the incident is, we'll put together, you know, the team that makes the most sense. This year, we sent three members of our safety team for a threat assessment team training through Ultra Bosse's. It was a full-day training. Everyone, the three people, which was myself, our school resource officer, Tom Sharon, and also school social worker, Megan Shanker. We were trained on the comprehensive school threat assessment guidelines. We came back and we turnkeyed that training to members of our safety team. Our team is now up and functioning. It's actually one of the few teams in the county that are active and functioning. In fact, one of our cases, we were able to work hand-in-hand with the new countywide threat assessment team, which is still developing. But because we were so involved in this, they wanted to see what we were doing, and they kind of piggybacked with us. And the whole point of the threat assessment team is to take, is really to take a look at a student who poses a risk and provide them with intervention services prior to a threat occurring. And what this means is tapping into all types of resources, from counseling to, you know, in district, to anything that's available through the county. And through the process, we could actually push different county agencies to actually expedite certain services for at-risk students. So, this is not punitive. It doesn't look at whether someone made a threat or what the consequences are. It's about intervening before something happens. So, I'm very proud of the team for doing this. We have a really nice model within our building safety team. We have a triage team, and then we have the surrounding team members with this. And again, we've used this a few times, and it's really got some students some services. In terms of safety drills, we have completed all the mandatory safety drills that we're required to do. What I wanted to mention about our safety drills is, beginning of the year when we start these drills, we want to make sure that people understand the protocols, what the responses are, what they're supposed to do. But as we progress through the school year, our safety drills become a little bit more targeted. We're actually at the stage where we're looking at what our vulnerabilities are. So, we test our system. So, sometimes you hear from, you know, your child, well, it didn't seem to go right. That's okay, because that's how we learn that there's an area that we have to improve upon. So, we may ran, we would never do this in the beginning of the year. We might randomly take a staff member and say, hey, call a lockdown drill. Figure it out, how to lock down the building. And, you know, it may cause a little anxiety for the staff member. We wouldn't do it to kids. But, you know, they have to figure out how to use that technology and how to secure it. So, you know, and one of them was like, wow, that voice was really low on the intercom. You know, it was hard to hear that it was only a drill. And it was like, well, that's a good thing, because now we're learning, and people get the experience of if this really happened, how do you do this? How do you make sure everyone knows? And there's so many other examples that I'm not going to, you know, share. But even in a fire drill, we may do a fire drill and say, you know what? You're so used to coming out this exit, but guess what? This is where the smoke condition is. Figure out how to take your class out a different way. So, that's what we're really trying to do, different types of scenarios without causing panic and alarm to any of the students. But that's the only way we're going to improve with the safety drills. In terms of security, I just want to assure you that every day we are doing security checks. Sometimes I pair with our SRO. Sometimes we have various staff members. We're making sure that, you know, doors are secured. We're trying to report anything that looks out of the ordinary. We try to take care of those things right away. You know, I was going to talk about shared responsibility and awareness in a little bit. But by frequently doing these types of checks, we kind of know what's normal, what's regular. And we identify what's out of place. And the important thing is making sure that people report to us when they see something that's not normal, a car that's not supposed to be parked where it is, something that just doesn't, just that looks out of place. So, we've worked on that a lot. One area that we've decided we're going to strengthen is how we handle visitors to the school. And a visitor could be anyone from, you know, someone trying to get a transcript to a parent dropping off lunch. The one thing we found is that our, is that, and this is not, this is not the fault of any of our people. But, you know, we've become a little more relaxed, because we want to have good, if you want to call it customer service or public relations. And the one thing we keep telling people is, when it comes to security, it's not going to be convenient. A secure environment is not convenient. So, we saw that we were doing little things like, hey, that's the same parent that comes in three or four days a week, because their student, their child forgets their lunch. So, we know, come this time, this parent's delivering their lunch to their kid. So, maybe they come up to the buzzer, and the person just recognizes that this is the same person three or four times. So, maybe they don't go through the whole process of, what's your name? Who are you here? Let me buzz you in. They recognize the person, so they buzz them in. That's not a good practice. It has to be done consistently. But by the same token, parents get frustrated when it's the same parent coming in every time, and you say, can I see your ID? But if you don't do these things consistently, and the parent said, why wasn't I asked for my ID? Well, because we know you, actually, you live down the block from me, you know? Or why are you asking me for my ID? Because I do live down the block from you. So, we're trying to get back to consistent practices. So, people, the community really just has to bear with us, because if we want that safe environment, this is a shared responsibility. We all have to say, we're going to be inconvenienced just a little bit. But it's in the interest of safety. Okay, can I move on? Anything on safety and security? I've only got a few more to go. Good? Okay. Regents' final exam review. The Board of Education asked us for a timeline to review data so that the building could make some recommendations as to whether or not we should be incorporating Regents' exam scores into the final grade point average. I took that back to the shared decision-making team. We met on May 8th, and we came up with a timeline. The liaisons, the department liaisons, have asked me to extract all the data in July. So, we'll have all the Regent data, all the final exams, all the changes in August. I will start analyzing it with our Director of Counseling Services and also one of our liaisons, actually a math teacher, because they'd be best suited for looking at the data. And then our first meeting, our first SDM meeting in September, all the departments will weigh in and will make a recommendation. We're not concerned about having the composite grading with the grading structure for each course on the syllabus and changing it, you know, as long as it's done, you know, September, October. We, no one felt that that was really a big concern. It's not really going to affect anything. So, that's our proposed timeline for looking over the Regents' data. Questions?
I'm still concerned with the timeline of not getting back to the board by September, getting into the board to make a decision before school starts. That's my concern. I've said this numerous times. So, that's a serious concern, because you, the teachers want to put in their syllabus. You know, the kids' first day of school should know what's going to count as their final grade. So, to be fair for our students. That's a serious main concern here.
Principal Edelman, what did the, how did the faculty feel about the September 10 timeline?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How did the faculty feel about the September timeline? What's the?
They came up with it, not me.
Yeah, so, so they feel comfortable with the September timeline, and?
They do, because they want it to be, they want it to be done thoughtfully. And they're not, you know, most of them aren't around. They don't work over the summer, and they want to analyze the data from their department.
Okay, and Trustee Story, your concern is that the students won't have enough time to acclimate to the decision?
They won't know. This year, we were told that this couldn't happen, because they didn't have enough time to change how the school, how things were getting graded. That was one of the reasons why we couldn't do that, discuss this this year.
And I think that's true. I think that's true. However.
I don't want this to continue on.
At the time that this came up, there were a lot of grades that were already in there. Quarter grades were already recorded, you know, and accommodations were already made. So, you know, I think September is, you know, and not a lot of grades are going to be in in September, and definitely no quarter grades will be in. So, I really don't see how changing the composite grading in September, even October for that matter, is problematic.
Trustee Bishop.
I think the difference is that this year, I don't think we started talking about it until January. Okay. Well, I think as a board, we didn't start talking about it until January.
Okay. Any other trustees have feedback on this decision, conversation?
I would concur with Val on this, on Trustee Story on this issue. I think that we could, I would like to see this done by the first day of the school year. And I think you've got a whole summer. And, you know, since it's something that's a discussion, maybe you could adjust that deadline.
I want to be really mindful of the fact that our faculty, most of them do not work in the summer, and they do have contracts that dictate when they are available. And we're not able to go outside of their contractual agreements. So, we're not actually able to tell them that they have to work over the summer and get this done. I think it's, I think it's really important, I'm going to say the same thing that I've been saying all year, that we let our teachers do their jobs. And if the faculty is saying that this is the appropriate timeline for them, my inclination is to support the faculty and to allow them to make the decision when they think that they should be making the decision, which, if it happens at the end of September, gives the students plenty of time, almost an entire year, to understand their syllabus and their curriculum, and what will be happening for them in, you know, when Regents are happening, which is not until the end of the year for most students. Any other trustees?
I think it's important to say that it's not the teachers' responsibility to do this. This is the Board of Education's role. This is one of our duties and our jobs, is policy and stuff like that. So, it's not the teachers. But we also, the whole, the board asked when, Trustee Edelman. Sorry, Principal Edelman was up here before.
I would have wanted to jump.
You know? But we want, but we asked for this information by August, so the board can make this decision before September.
I don't, I don't actually recall giving Mr. Edelman a definitive timeline. I thought the way we left it was that the SDM would give us a timeline, and then we would make a decision based off of the timeline they're giving us.
I think we asked for it.
I don't know what's going on, Bill. Joris, can you take a look at my mic? Sorry, Bill.
As I recall, we asked for it in August. But I'm not going to say 100%. It was several board meetings ago. But I remember it being discussed.
Yeah, I just, I think we have to be mindful that the data will be extracted in July, and that's because the Regents' exams are taken till the end of June. You know, we can't, we can't expect the SDM to get together and, you know, to segregate data that they don't have.
Yeah, I mean, I could do it myself, but I don't think that's in the spirit of the shared decision-making process.
No, I, is that, Bill, is that better? Can you, ish? Ish? Okay. Ish. You know, I think that what this really comes down to is, yes, it is absolutely the board's purview, and it is one of our only jobs to set policy. However, that can't happen in a vacuum. It needs to happen with the faculty and staff, especially in this case, when we are setting policy that has the potential to really change the way that they move through their school years and the way that the children's education is measured. I want to be really careful with this. I think it's really important that we allow the faculty to handle things in the way that they think is best. And if they are not working over the summer, I don't think it's appropriate for Mr. Edelman to make this decision on his own. And we will not have the data until July. So, I just don't see the staff coming in and working, and I don't think we should ask them to. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Jesse Ramonda?
I always like a timeline. So, I know we haven't done our schedule for our meetings yet. I believe that we do that in July. So, perhaps once we have our September meeting dates, we could hone in on when we'd like it by. So, that gives you, you know, so if it's the second Tuesday. it's the second Tuesday of the month, then maybe we aim for that. So it kind of gives everyone a period in that.
Yeah, even if I have to push the SDM meeting earlier than it normally is scheduled in the beginning of the year, I could certainly do, pull the team together earlier.
Yeah, if you, if you can compromise with us a little bit, I think that would be helpful. So if we could have the information by the middle of September, which, Trustee Story, would that, I know it's not right where you want to be, but-
I'm sorry. To me, it's unacceptable. We need, we asked for this stuff at a previous board member, this information to be here by August so the board can make the decision. And that's where I'm coming from.
No, I understand where you're coming from. I just, we aren't going to have teachers in the building to make, to get the work done. So, you know, there has to be, I think that there has to be a compromise on both sides. So I hear Principal Edelman saying that he's willing to do it, and he wants to give you the information that you're looking for. But we do have to be mindful of where the educators are. They're not here. You know, they're not, they're not physically in the building, and we know that. You know, we know what their schedules are like, and we know that they don't have to be here and that they're not here. So we can ask Principal Edelman to give us something that he can't actually give us, or we can work within the timeline that he can provide the information.
I'm sorry, our students are losing out on this, and that's what it comes down to. That's why I keep fighting for this over and over again, because I'm here for our students. And it's really aggravating that this is something that the board has asked numerous times. I brought this to Superintendent McLaren back in October, is when this is when I started bringing this discussion to the thing. And this has not gotten through. And here we are, still delaying this discussion.
I know this has been really important for Trustee Story. We do have a draft meeting scheduled for next year. The first September meeting looks like September 12. So that's about a week into school. I think we start. That's about a weekend.
Okay, I'm comfortable with September 12. I'd like to know if trustees are comfortable with September 12. Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Trustee Wallace?
Yeah, I can live with it.
Trustee Bishop?
Yes.
Trustee Ramondo?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
No.
Okay. All right. Mr. Edelman, if you can please make sure that the data and the decision is made and presented, be prepared to present to the board on September 12.
I will schedule that SDM meeting on the first Superintendent Conference Day. So it'll be a done, that'll be a done deal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edelman.
Okay. I've got one more slide to go, or two. Okay, they're easier ones. Okay. I was also asked by the Board of Education to talk about the issue pertaining to graduation next year, not this year, next year. And again, just to refresh everyone's memory, the issue is with the calendar. Next year, the last day of school is on Wednesday, June 26th. And the issue being that typically Antioa holds its graduation ceremony on a Friday. However, you know, it's going to be quite challenging, not impossible, but challenging to do a ceremony on a Friday. So what we did was, we started working with our junior class officers. We created a feedback survey. We sent out child points, distributed to students and their parents, asking everyone to give us their information by, their input by May 14th. I looked at the, I looked at the responses very briefly with the class officers, just with the number of respondents. I did not let anyone see any of the results. The issue that they had was that there's only 42 people who responded to the survey, and the bulk of them, bulk of them were parents. The junior class officers just asked if I could keep it open a little bit longer and have the Social Studies Department let the kids know that they have, they need to respond right away. So we should have that information, that decision by next, by next board meeting without an issue. So, any questions about that? Okay, finally, this is like a really busy, crazy time at the high school. There's a million events going. I can't, I can't cover them all. This is an exciting week. We have Spirit Week, and incidentally, it's not updated on the slides up on the wall, but the staff, faculty just overtook the sophomore class. So we're in the lead with points for Spirit based on different activities that are going on. We do have a War of the Classes on Thursday. But before I get that, tomorrow, we do have the winter, not the winter, the Spring Concert. We also decided to livestream that. If you go to the high school's website, there is also a link on there for the livestreaming. And also, and I just saw one of the kids who are in the Rocket Club are in here, but I wanted to also say thank you to the board for approving their trip. Our Rocket Club has made it to Nationals. Arna Society is going to be sending them off on Thursday. So we wish them the very best of luck. Please look at the high school website, the calendar. It is up to date and has a million different events, and hope to see everyone at some of these events. So I talked a really long time today. Is there anything I missed?
Thank you so much. I know that we've asked a lot of you, and I really appreciate you getting it all together and bringing it to us. And thank you to Mr. Harkin for being available tonight. I know that you have a busy sports schedule, and we appreciate that too, that you've done so much work with all the sports teams this year. Thank you for that. And thanks, Miss Edelman. I'm sure you'll get lots more questions in the future. Thank you. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of May 2nd, 2023. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Taylor, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Superintendent, District News?
Good evening. I wanted to start by saying, if anyone has missed, our district clerk, Amanda Gates, we are happy to announce that she has had her baby daughter, Ren Meadow, and we want to wish the family congratulations. We look forward to when Amanda returns, but in the meantime, we know that she is enjoying this time with her family. We are excited to share that we have worked with our community partners. A lot of this was Assistant Superintendent Allison, working really closely with our family partners to create full-time, full-day slots for all of the families who have UPK students who are registered for the 23-24 school year. We want to thank our UPK partners for their patience and their collaboration as we navigated through this. We currently have UPK-specific grant funding for the majority of the slots, and then we are allocating additional funding from the grants that we've received to address learning loss in order to ensure that everyone not only has the opportunity to participate, but also that they all have access to a full-day program. So we had been historically working with our community partners to convert half-day slots to full-day slots. But we have also applied to the state for conversion of those, of the existing funding for the half-day to be turned into full-day funding. But in the meantime, we are filling the remaining gap with that other grant funding. We often have families who need to decline the half-day slots because they do not fulfill families' needs, and we want to serve as many of our youngest learners as possible. So we currently have 52 children scheduled to be served for the coming year. The letters are drafted and ready to be sent tomorrow. People, through the lottery process, we matched people with their first choice of location as much as possible, and anyone else has been assigned. And then we will work through the process of if people, if people need to switch or have different needs, how we can work through that. But we have worked really hard, and we very much appreciate our community partners as well. And I'd like to thank Assistant Superintendent Allison because she did very much make this a priority and took a lot of work and time and did a great job. So every so often, district is seen as a model, and we were once again viewed as a model. So the Eldred Central School District Elementary Staff and Administration came to visit our Bennett Elementary on May 9th in order to see our ELA program. Eldred is just beginning to implement the Columbia University's Teachers College Program, and they know that we have a longtime success here in Antioa by implementing that. So many teachers showcased our classroom libraries, our mentor texts, the workshop models, mini lessons, and small group conferencing. Eldred faculty and administrators were able to see the lesson architecture, teacher demonstration text, routines, and the structure of each workshop model. Book clubs, word study, and student engagement were observed through the classroom visits and the discussions. They spent some time in Mr. LaFara's room with reading workshop, in Ms. Countryman's room with reading workshop, and book clubs. Ms. Erwin was showing the writing workshop, and they also spent time meeting with AIS, Reading AIS teachers, Ms. Kovak, Ms. Countryman, and Ms. McCarthy. And they debriefed with Mr. Bono as well. They also visited Mrs. Leffert's room for the writing workshop. And I was just going to say, as Mr. Edelman did, our Spring Concert is tomorrow. And I know that the Booster Club has also created a whole wraparound schedule of additional offerings for everybody. And I want to thank them for everything that they do. They have been incredibly active here, working on school spirit and supporting all of our clubs as well as our sports. So thank you very much.
Does anyone have questions for the superintendent? Trustee Wallace?
Just for interest, how many people applied for the lottery, if it was 52 slots?
There were 52.
So we were able to satisfy every single UPK full day? That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks to our community partners, really stretching and expanding and helping us.
Well, that's great.
Any other questions for the superintendent?
Superintendent McLaren, you forgot to talk about our lovely grants. Would you like me to take that one?
Yes, I would love for you to do that.
So as many of you know, that we've received quite a lot of money from the federal government for the stimulus funding from COVID. So one of the requirements of the grant is to keep you, the board, as well as the public, up to date on where we are with spending the money and what type of projects we've been spending them on. So to date, we have, whoops, hold on, had it open. We were, we have, we've received roughly $2 million in what's called the CHRISA grant, which is the, yeah, COVID readiness, something, something. And we have spent all but approximately $200,000 of it. This grant is set to expire September 30th of this year, so we will obviously do everything possible. We have bi-weekly, monthly meetings to discuss what we're doing. Unfortunately, when, a lot of times, what happens is when this grant was written back in 2020, things change. Programs that we thought we might do, we aren't doing. So currently, we purchase such things as the tents and the tables for COVID, the air purifiers. Much of the work that's being done up here in the high school this summer is coming out of this grant, in addition to funding summer school, after-school, homework help, things like that. And a lot of the additional mental health supports that we were able to provide the students also came out of this funding. So it has really helped us. Actually, the TOSA as well, the additional TOSA has come out of this funding. So it is very, it has been very helpful. We've also received, so that was just CHRISA. So we also received over $4 million for ARP. ARP is the American Rescue Plan. That one expires September 30th of 2024. So we do have that one for another year plus a summer. So that is, we are using that money to help fund the additional all-day pre-K slots. We are also looking at, you'll see a contract on the agenda tonight for all points, that is also being funded out of this, in addition to some, the UNIVENTS projects. So a lot of additional capital work is also being funded out of this grant, in addition to Teachers Writing College, Branching Minds, professional development, all sorts of things that we, not that we may not have done, but we may not have been able to do it in as large of a scale. The number of teachers that we're able to send to professional development for these new trainings and programs has, this money has helped us with all of that. So I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of it, so that now I can show, you know, show the State Comptroller's Office this video to say that we definitely did update everybody.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent LaFara. Does anyone have questions about CHRISA or the ARP money? No? Okay. The Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services will present our mental health snapshot.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. And I couldn't think of a better meeting after Principal Edelman's presentation to tie in mental health, because I think school safety and certainly substance abuse and vaping all go hand in hand. So a couple months ago, the board had asked for a snapshot of where we are in terms of our mental health support, so I'm going to present it to you guys. All right. So just an overall summary of our district mental health team. You can see, each building has at least one psychologist. Our middle school and high school share two. Every building has a social worker. Our Phoenisha building shares Rosalie Murnan as a social worker there, and also as our community and parent family support. We also have school counselors in our high school, middle school, and a school counselor in our Bennett team who also helps support all of our K, our elementary buildings. So I reached out to my colleagues regionally just to get a snapshot of where we are in comparison in terms of our support. The only district I didn't hear back from was Allenville. But as you can see, and I apologize if it's a little small, we are by far, which is a real source of pride for Antioa, we have by far the most mental health support. Our psychologists and social workers have the lowest caseload shared between our full total population compared to our neighboring districts. And a lot of our neighboring districts are looking at how they can build mental health support. I think that's one of the growing issues that every district is seeing, not only in New York, but nationally and probably internationally. So I'm really proud that Antioa has been ahead of the game and has realized the important need. In addition, one of the things that we have, that I'm going to talk a little bit more, is a partnership with Aster. And I'll get into that in terms of our full-time Aster social worker that's here and our partnership with LaSalle. So we have, in our buildings, we have what's called mandated counseling, and that's counseling that is specific based on individual education plans, or IEPs, or Section 504 plans. And you can see the numbers in comparison to the building size. What this doesn't necessarily take into account is all the discretionary counseling that happens. Our school counselors, clinicians, psychologists, social workers are constantly supporting students, whether they're on their quote-unquote caseload or not. They're there as a mental health support whenever students need it. And it's hard to necessarily take data on that. So I want to just validate that discretionary counseling continues to be important. And also, some of our programs, our management attention program that is housed at Bennett and at Woodstock, those, that program supports students that may have more, more social, emotional regulation needs. So there may be much more work happening within that classroom and multiple counseling sessions occurring. This also doesn't take into account the classroom, many classroom presentations that our staff do in terms of Too Good For Drugs. that our staff do in terms of Too Good For Drugs or supporting in all different ways in terms of also their ongoing support with SEL. So I did this slide last year, but I just think it's also just a summary to point out the difference between school-based counseling and community-based psychotherapy. So school-based counseling, the focus is helping students function more effectively in the classroom and in their peers. Not to say that they can't be focusing on trauma and different things that are going on, but the focus is to help students be successful in their academic setting. Whereas, community-based psychotherapy is meant to really work on some of those longer-term pieces. They can absolutely go hand in hand, and in fact, our school clinicians and counselors try to partner with community-based therapists as much as they can so that we kind of work as liaisons together and can kind of tackle things together and also be able to report on how students are doing in different settings. So, mental health support's already in place at elementary. List is long, but just some things that I can shout out. We use a lot of mindfulness, zones of regulation. There's a lot of PD that we're supporting around trauma-informed practices, about functional behavioral assessments and behavior improvement plans, parent training, therapeutic crisis intervention with a huge component on de-escalation. Again, we talked about the Too Good For Drugs. That's a huge component in the elementary setting. Use of cognitive behavioral therapy, SMART goals, and really making sure that we're documenting for multi-tiered systems of support, which I'll talk a little bit in a little, towards the end. At the secondary, there's like almost too much that we could probably have slides and slides and slides. Mr. Edelman, Mr. Diddonna's team do an incredible job at trying to support students, and you heard Mr. Edelman talk a little bit about all, just a small amount of the support. But they also do a ton of work around pushing into classrooms. May, this May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and our social workers and psychologists push into seven to 12 classes to discuss different mental health topics. There's a lot of work around anxiety. In the past, they've done trauma-informed yoga. There is work on conflict mediation and resolution, presentations in classrooms about warning signs of anxiety and depression, discretionary counseling, and work on teams with youth crisis assessment. They do a lot of work in terms of training themselves on best practices around crisis assessment, especially around mental health, so that they can really make strong clinical calls. So just pointing out our resources, we continue to have a district SEL website, and on our district counseling website, you'll see all of the school counselors, their contact information, roles, and also there's tons of resources about different areas of counseling, whether it's substance abuse, bereavement, anxiety, depression, and also providers that are in this area. We try to update that as much as we possibly can, but that's all right on our website for our families. So, I wouldn't be talking about mental health without talking about obstacles and Ulster County has its share. So again, we continue to have limited mental health services within the region. There's limited mobile mental health services. For me, I see such a limit in psychiatric, psychiatry services in the region. Limited providers, huge workforce shortages, difficulty with transportation for families to get to mental health centers. If they can get through even teletherapy, we got tons of Wi-Fi issues up here. Difficulty with costs, even with sliding scale, and issues, again, with the region of just having multigenerational trauma, homelessness, food scarcity, and substance abuse. So I did reach out to our County Department of Mental Health and spoke with the deputy commissioner and asked if she could share some of their data in terms of where we are, just in terms of, so that you guys got a snapshot of Ulster County. So this data is from January 2023, so it's pretty recent. And I'm just gonna talk a little bit about what they shared with me, because I found it pretty jarring as to what we are dealing with in our district in comparison to our county. So they're reporting that there are 53 youth and adults currently waiting for an appointment in one of our mental health clinics, although that's down. It's still a bit, and I think that number's probably growing. It currently takes 25 days on average, so that means it can take more or less from time, from the time someone calls for their first appointment. And after the first appointment, it takes 32 days on average to see a doctor or nurse practitioner to prescribe medicine, which can be a lot, especially if you're in a point of crisis. So in 2023, they supported 2,007 youth and adults by the Mobile Mental Health Team. 38 calls were transferred from 911 to Mobile Mental Health instead of law enforcement. There were 2,607 visits to the psychiatric emergency department at Health Alliance, and there were 18 suicide fatalities this year, which is down from 24. Addiction. This year, there were a total of 430 non-fatal overdoses and 67 opiate-related fatalities. 205 overdoses reversed by Narcon, so a 14% increase. Currently, there are nine people on the waiting list for methadone treatment. I also wonder personally if some of these numbers are decreased because so many of our families are moving out of this county because of housing insecurity. So I do think that that is an important variable in terms of looking at some of these decreasing numbers. Housing and support. Currently, 88% of mental health housing slots are filled. There are 70 people waiting for an opening, a record low again. They're leaving the area. There are 690 youth and adults that have been connected to a care manager, peer, or other health support system, like a single point of access. So jarring numbers. You can see the suicide rate, thankfully, in terms of our youth is at zero in 2022 and does seem to be kind of showing some variable data in terms of all suicide rates. So what are we continuing to experience here in Antioa? Continue to have uptick in discretionary drop-ins. Continue need for support in conflict resolution, interpersonal skills. We're still seeing support and the need to teach cooperative play skills and independently solve problems. And we're continuing to work with teacher requests for counseling consults and coaching to address behavioral issues. So we did, last year, I stood before this board and talked about pursuing a partnership with Aster and was screaming from the rooftops when they said, "Yes, we'll do it." We began a partnership this year. With the workforce shortages that I talked about as an obstacle, it took until January of 2023, from the time we sent, we signed that contract last May, for them to be able to find a therapist to work in this area. But we did, and we love her. Her name is Noah Coffold. She is a master's-level social worker clinician. She is housed at our high school, middle school. We are planning to also, we are working with the Office of Mental Health and Aster to also identify an additional shared site so that we can have Noah available at different component parts of our district. Her hours are flexible. She usually works about 35 hours weekly, but that could include evenings, that can include telehealth. She's very, very flexible. She had, her roles can include individual family and collateral treatment with family. She can provide consultation with consent to school staff, support in crisis intervention, suicide threat assessment, observation, or consultation. She can be utilized, if needed, as a tier-three intervention, and she can act as a liaison between school and Aster services. We have created a referral form that school staff and administration use to start the intake process. So our partnership with Aster, just to give you guys, it shows all the different things. So Aster can help with partial hospital programs, home-based crisis, referral to telehealth. They do have psychiatric services, usually also telehealth, referral to a short-term therapeutic support program, and they have some evening hours. It can be provided through in-person or teletherapy. And Aster, community therapy is paid through insurance with support of Aster staff for Medicaid support or sliding scale. So these are our total referrals by building. This was from April 18th when I looked at this. And so they have probably gone up, but you can see, I think what we are tending to see is a slow build of trust in terms of our families allowing their children to, and themselves, to work with an outside mental health provider. And as a, never a former social worker, always a social worker first, but I know that building that trust and allowing people to see you as a helper and not as someone who's going to penalize you takes some time. And so we're working really hard, and our school staff are working incredibly hard to help shape and pair that. So we are seeing that gradual increase. We still, Noah still has room on her caseload, but she is starting to fill up quickly. So we are excited about that. So earlier this year, I attended a meeting with the Ulster County Department of Mental Health and the LaSalle School. LaSalle is a program based out of Albany County. They run a therapeutic day and residential program, but they also have outside clinic. And Ulster County has partnered with them using their opiate funds that they have been awarded to provide mental health support to middle school students and families within Ulster region. It is a free program. There's no cost to taxpayers in the, at all. Again, the money comes out of their opiate-awarded money. And what this program targets is middle school, seventh and eighth graders, although we have been told we can refer fifth or sixth grade. It is for 10 students. There doesn't have to be a diagnosis. You don't have to do a handy-dandy form, just consent from the family. It's a dyad approach, which means they pair a case manager and a therapist to work intensively with the family. They can support substance abuse, truancy, sexual abuse, fire setting, cyberbullying, social media, anxiety, depression, trauma. They will pretty much handle everything. It is meant to be short-term, but can be longer if needed. And parents just have to be open to frequent meetings. No health insurance or diagnosis is necessary, and they currently have nine spots open. Again, workforce shortages, only, I don't even think we have the therapist that started yet. I believe the therapist starts in two weeks. It's taken this long to find that. So both programs work with district mental health team members on referrals, and both programs can work together to coordinate transition of cases deemed to be long or short-term. And I have sat in meetings, including with Mr. Edelman, with LaSalle and Aster to try and partner and make sure that we're all talking together so that we're not, we're using our resources efficiently and making sure to spread them out as much as we can. We continue to have a partnership with Morning Sign in terms of our social, emotional learning. We continue to strengthen our implementation of New York State Education Department's culturally responsive sustaining framework and use of restorative practices. And one of the things I think Assistant Superintendent Laffin and I are most proud of this year is a lot of the work that we're doing with multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS. So I included a three-tiered model for you guys to take a look at. And this is really based on a behavioral, social, emotional lens of it. Tier one supports that we're providing to everyone within the classroom setting. Tier two, at-risk students, so that's your small groups, maybe some pullouts. And tier three, high-risk individual interventions. And all of this comes into play with progress monitoring. So one of the things that I'm most excited about, and I think you've heard, we just heard Assistant Superintendent Leclaire talk about a contract, but we are partnering with a program called Branching Minds. It's a K-12 data platform. It will import student data from our student information system. It will also import data from our progress monitoring, our benchmarks, our academics. It can import behavior progress data, incident tracking. It also has a unique social, emotional learning assessment that can be utilized to help us look at what risk factors are going on, collects insights from teachers to better understand student strengths and needs, and also provides a library to students based on the data of the evidence-based best practices to target that specific problem area. It will be able to give us a snapshot of how our students are doing with a snap of a finger, which is really lovely for us to be able to celebrate all of our strengths and accomplishments. And it will also, which I'm most excited about, create an alignment amongst our buildings about how we are taking data, how we're measuring, and we can see a student's history from K to 12 in terms of the resources that were provided and their progress in terms of interventions. Future initiatives that we are looking at. So we're looking at new parent trainings tailored to the needs of Antioa families, more trainings for staff around trauma-informed practice and mental health first aid, more trainings for staff around the foundations of MTSS, continued partnership with Aster and LaSalle, including more work around mental health and substance abuse. And one thing that I'm really excited about that I have to thank Jenny Jarrett for, because she was the muse for that, was a district wellness fair that we're looking to partner with our shared stakeholder groups, especially our PTAs, to kind of look at a day where we can target mental health, substance abuse, physical health, nutrition. We want to really celebrate wellness in our district. Any questions or comments?
Justice Dory?
More of a comment. At a Ulster County School Board meeting, I believe it was back in March, that County Executive, John Mesker, had said that the county will continue paying for the LaSalle program for another year. So I think that's very fortunate that the county will be, will continue to be paying for this program.
Considering we just got the therapist, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful for that. That'd be great.
Justy Wallace?
I was wondering, what's the one resource that you would either change or you would need that would improve the mental health access for our students? If you could pick one thing that would be on your wish list, what would it be?
A psychiatrist that our families could access. That's not just a telehealth person, someone that could actually see physically, observe a student, and work with families and be able to spend the time to really figure out what's going on for our families.
It's good to know from our standpoint. Let me just say, a personal comment, in nearly the year that I've been on the board, one of my proudest votes is for tenure for Assistant Superintendent Allison and Assistant Superintendent Laffin. They are exemplary, exemplary, amazing additions to this district that care for our children and they do the most important work, and I just couldn't be prouder of that decision.
Thank you.
Ms. Allison, can you talk a little bit about the Morning Side work? Because, you know, it's something that Antioa has been doing for quite a while, and I'm wondering if you can kind of tell us where we're at today and how you'd like to see that utilized? What would be your preference for utilizing Morning Side next year?
So I'll start, but I'm gonna let Assistant Superintendent Laffin jump right in there. But I think that we have, are continuing to utilize them the most in the K-6 level. We have continued to increase our training in terms of being able for our staff to provide circles, groups, and I think what I'm seeing is a real want and a need to look at more training around restorative practices and to help as we navigate the future of our district, a lot of support with healing. And, and to help as we navigate the future of our district, a lot of support with healing and giving our students and staff support that they need. I don't know Assistant Superintendent Laffin, if you want to jump on in there.
Sure. So obviously, you know, Morningside, the district has had a fairly long relationship with them that began before Assistant Superintendent Allison and I were here. So it was really a wonderful asset to have them to help guide us through some of the social emotional needs of our students in COVID. And as we transition out of COVID, we've really utilized that organization and the relationships they've developed with our staff members to help us to implement more deeply the New York State CRS framework. So in other words, New York State requires that we work through that framework around social emotional learning, issues around diversity and bias, all kinds of aspects of that. We've utilized them for that work. At the high school level, we are in middle school and into the high school level. Our individual teachers are continuing to design their own work around circles, to work with some of the curriculum that has been shared with us from Morningside, but to make it their own to fit more of our needs for Auntie Ora and our, our environment. The, the students who are here are, make it specific to our community. But also on the elementary level, the curriculum that we've utilized at the elementary level has really been essential, helping students as they work through the classroom. They develop their own peace circles, areas that they, when they have a conflict within the classroom, they can ask for and refer to the different processes and protocols they've utilized. So we are building on those foundations. We are fine-tuning the professional development based on the needs of teachers, the feedback. Also at the end of this year, we've been working specifically with TAs. Our TAs have requested some specific training to make sure they've had access to and can think about and works deeply in that area, similar to the teachers, so that they can partner in those ways. So we're definitely going to continue some work next year and get feedback. We've been getting feedback from principals and staff members on what they hope that could look like.
Excellent. Thank you. There was some talk in the beginning of the year because students had noticed at the high school level that Morningside wasn't really pushing in to the older grades. And I was surprised to get feedback from older students that, that they were kind of missing doing that hands-on work. And I just wondered if any of the fantastic mental health supports that you guys have built into our programming here actually provides for a high school level, hands-on kind of mental health work, similar to the circles and the circle building that they had done when they were younger. Because I was very surprised to hear them say that they were missing it. Generally, 16, 17-year-olds don't really miss anything, but they, there was a lot of feedback about it.
I could begin to speak to that. As far as mental health, I'll definitely defer to Ms. Allison on that. But one of the things that we've been able to utilize this year, Principal Edelman has worked carefully to make sure that any teacher at the high school level who was not trained in implementation of circles had a two-part training around making sure their classroom was supportive. Whether it's some research-based practices that create and strengthen relationship, that allows students to have a voice, that allows students to see themselves in the classroom. So that's work that we were able to do this year that we had, to my knowledge, we've never really done. So it allowed our Morningside support to reach into classrooms that they had never really been in. By classrooms, I mean working with teachers that had never fully received that professional development. So the idea is outside of a circle, which, you know, our schedule is really challenging to make that happen on a regular basis and keep academics at the forefront. It's really hard. So the idea is, how can we implement some of these strategies? How can teachers really reflect on and make themselves, make, make them their own to, to do that in their class more regularly? There was a process where they looked at a rubric. Montgomery County has a, Montgomery County in Maryland has a really extensive SEL practice and a rubric that they utilize. And Morningside has adapted that, picked that up. And teachers were able to look at that rubric, reflect upon their classroom and identify areas that they could grow.
I'll, I'll add that in the secondary level, there is a lot of support that our counselors provide in terms of after-school support. Megan Shanker leads the Teaming Up For Success. They do, again, tons of presentations within the classrooms and are always looking at ways to support under Principal Edelman's leadership. They meet on a regular basis in terms of all the clinical team to kind of look at the students that are at risk and try to create plans and programs. I think as we further delve into MTSS and looking at Branching Minds, that tier one support of what we're doing in all of our classrooms in terms of mental health and behavioral support, I'm hopeful that that will be common language and that we'll be looking at using good strategies across the board, K to 12.
Yeah, Justy Lynch.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of questions, Ms. Allison, about ASTER. You mentioned there were 22 referrals. Does that mean that the social worker there is at capacity or would you say half capacity?
Nope. She has room for at least 10 to 15 more families. And again, therapy kind of waves, ebbs and falls. A lot of time you go in, you take some breaks, you come back out, especially when you're, you may be tackling some harder issues. You do it slowly and, and she works around what families need. But she's certainly willing, doesn't have to be a referral from a school staff member. A parent can call and certainly reach out. And there is absolutely, if insurance is an issue, their sliding scale, they're there to support. And we certainly look at ways that we can make community mental health counseling as available as we can and to try to remove as many obstacles as we can.
I remember when we introduced the program last summer, I guess, there was a question about their ability to support communications for parents and teachers so that everybody knew that the service was available. Has that happened or can we utilize that?
Yeah, so we've talked a lot with ASTER in terms of, because they are widespread in many, many, many different districts around the region, from Pauling to Pine Plains to, are they in Kingston? I think they're in Kingston. I think they're in New Paltz. They're, they're in a lot of different districts and, and full in, in all of them. And we asked them, you know, how does it, how has it worked in terms of being able to generate referrals? And they said, we're happy to come out and do an event, but generally it's through trust that parents will come. And so we have seen the widest amount of parents accepting, looking at mental health support, which is a really personal journey, through partnerships with our own school clinicians, making that initial referral support. I am hopeful and I think we've only had the therapist here since January and you gotta love Auntie Ora weather up here because I don't think we had like a full week of school without a delay or something going on for a couple of months there. But she's, she's seeing an uptick week by week of support. It's also a 12-month support. So she's there in the summer even when the teachers are not. So I'm hopeful that we're working very closely to see if we can support, especially those students that may be at risk when there are no teachers and teaching assistants over the summer to greet them and make sure that they're safe, that we try to help those students first.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. And then my other question was just about branching minds. Curious, it sounds fabulous. You talked about a dashboard view. Is that something that the board could look at at a regular interval that's anonymous or protects privacy?
I'm sure that with the support of Assistant Superintendent Laffin and Superintendent McLaren, we can absolutely present data. It doesn't, shouldn't have personable identifying information. It can just give you an overview by building by grade of where our students are achievement-wise. So that shouldn't be a problem, but what will be nice is that it will be, we'll be able to just get it in a second. You could see in comparison of all of our grades and buildings using the same set of data standards.
Okay, great. And is it something that parents can also access for their own children?
No, so it wouldn't be, it would be for teachers, but certainly if a student was receiving any kind of MTSS AIS support, that's something that would have, there would be consent. And there certainly would be progress monitoring and information shared with parents about how their students are doing with the interventions that we are putting in place.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else with questions? Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Allison.
Thank you.
That was exactly the overview we were, we were looking for and a tremendous amount of information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work. What I don't see here is copies of the NISBA resolution kit. We usually have paper copies. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know it's online, but generally we would have a paper copy to go over. I don't have my computer out. Do you want to facilitate the NISBA resolution kit? I, I think the idea was just to discuss what the resolution kit is and to talk a little bit about getting ready for submitting resolutions. If the new board members kind of remember that process from last year and what that looked like. The goal is to provide NISBA with potential resolutions that the board agrees on as a whole. So we have to have a discussion and, you know, conversation about, about the resolutions. And then the ones that we're in agreement on, we submit to NISBA. And then they tell us whether or not they agree with our resolutions. And then they are submitted to the greater, everyone who is a school board member across New York State for their vote. If they agree, if all of New York State's school board members agree with a majority, then those are issues that NISBA agrees to focus on for their advocacy work. Does that make sense to you guys? Go ahead, Val.
And they're also not, we're not required to make any resolutions.
Right, we're not required to. I mean, obviously I would say we would do it because why wouldn't we engage civically and ask NISBA to get involved and advocate on behalf of what we think is important for the children and the taxpayers in the district. So I would certainly encourage everyone to make sure that that happens this year and that we get some resolutions out there. They're, they're kind of sick of some of the ones that we've been sending along for a number of years about, primarily about healthcare, you know, with the idea being that if New York State had a healthcare system, that it would reduce the tax burden on the taxpayers because so much of our budget goes to paying healthcare for our retirees and for our faculty and staff. NISBA does not seem to feel the same way about it. So we'll have to think about whether or not we want to keep sending that one over. But something for everyone to think about is, you know, what, what is important to each of you? What do you think that NISBA can advocate for? So keeping in mind kind of the structure of the school board and what it is that we actually do and how we could best use the opportunity to get in front of our colleagues and have NISBA advocate on our behalf.
Justy Lynch.
Thank you, Trusty Sherry. Yeah, I remember last year we were successful in getting one added. I'm just, it was about universal pre-K. I'm curious, does that then continue year over year or is it a new slate every year? Because I thought there were some that were like evergreens on the NISBA.
Yeah, I mean, they evergreen and they sundown, you know, like they, but, but you do have to resubmit them. They don't, they don't carry over. Their assumption, I would imagine, is that if, if you still care about it, then you should resubmit it. And generally speaking, they get re-accepted because they were accepted in the past. But yeah, they would need to be resubmitted.
Superintendent.
I just wanted to note that the timeline to have them submitted to NISBA is July 14th, which would mean that they would have to be approved by the board at the reorg meeting. So probably if people have thoughts and ideas, it would be good to start talking about them in the June meetings, the next two meetings, so that by the reorg, it could be sort of finalized and submitted. Because I think Trusty Hemingway Lynch really rushed last year to get that resolution in and it was great and it was successful. But I think if we take some time and think about it, it would be good to keep in mind that's the timeline.
I think, Trusty Lynch, if you were going to resubmit the same plan as last year, you don't have to change any wording or anything. It can just be submitted exactly the way it was. I know that's the way that we've always resubmitted our healthcare try every year.
Although to the superintendent's point, we could probably do a better job this time around with a little more time. I think we did it on a break.
I don't think that was the point. Yeah, I think that, yeah, we just don't want anybody to have to rush the way that you did last year. So, you know, trustees should be thinking about what they might want to bring to the table so that we can discuss it at the next meeting. And we'll, we'll add that to the agenda. Any other questions about the resolution kit? You guys all have access to it. Please look it over. It's, it's fairly extensive and it gives you a lot of information. Do you want to? So we've got a discussion about athletic teams. Yeah, I think we'll, I don't, I don't think that there's anything, we were just gonna, yeah, there's nothing pressing. We were just going to start kind of having the conversation about how, what some of the roadblocks are, what we're looking at for next year, how the kids are kind of dividing and making sure that, that the students and the parents all have a voice, I think is really like the generalization of that conversation. And we'll put that on the next agenda. The Board of, the Board of Education hereby approves the Science Survival Class to attend an overnight trip to the O'Shea Can Center on June 2nd, 2023 to June 4th, 2023 and pay all necessary fees. May I have a first, please? Trusty Ramondo, second, Trusty Bishop, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. The Board will acknowledge the publicly heard comments from the last meeting. Melissa Thongs, Adam Trescott, Carolyn Jerome, Jeff Bailey, Eliza Kelly, Stephanie Bryant, Sharon McInerney, Christine Fox, Clark Goodrich, Ashley Lovelace, Megan Brenner, Elizabeth Nysel, Esther Downton, Rick Wolf, Adam Snyder, Matt Leclerc, Scott Barrett, Joan Pacioni, Meshah Foge, Lori Osman, Jane Brooks, Christina Signor, Kevin Salem, Sean Collin, Cara Calivas, Tara Buckley, Chloe, no last name provided, Jenny Jarrett, Reina Spada, Regina Lim, Daphne DeJesus, Jennifer Aug, Cassidy Casello, and Carl Fusca. The Board of Education hereby approves consent agenda item numbers 9.02 to 9.08 with the addition of Deb Dupreehl as an additional election registrar at the Woodstock Elementary School to cover an absence from the Board of Elections. May I have a first, please? Trusty Ramondo, second, Trusty Taylor, questions or comments? Yeah, Justy Lynch.
I reviewed everything and it all seems to be in order. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. The Board of Education hereby approves items 10.02 to 10.04. May I have a first? Trusty Story, second, Trusty Wallace, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. The Board of Education hereby accepts policy 5250 as reviews. May I have a first? Trusty Bishop, second, Trusty Story, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. We're going to break until the votes are in. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
There were agenda copier issues.
Okay, the first reading and adoption of policy, purchasing policy 5410. And the first reading of concussion policy 7422, which we are going to waive. Thank you. Okay. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Ramondo, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Is that everything? Because I don't, I think I'm missing, my agenda's a little wonky. Okay. All right, there they are. Yeah, we're good. We'll be back. Taking a break. We'll be back after we certify the votes.
Good evening everyone, so we do have some preliminary results. So for our proposition one, 1386 yes, 454 no. For proposition two, 1115 yes, 337 no. For proposition three, 1349 yes, 460 no. And unfortunately we are still counting the write-in votes, so we are unable to announce the total votes cast for the candidates at this time.
Okay, welcome back everybody. Sorry. And I apologize, none of us have ever certified a vote before, so we're gonna figure it out as we go.
So, item 1301.
Okay, item 1301, the Declaration of Votes Cast for Proposition One. The Board of Education hereby certifies the votes cast for Proposition One, the 2023-24 Budget of $61,322,550. We have 1,372 yes and 454 no. Can I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, can I have a second? Trustee Lynch, all in favor? That's unanimous. And me too. Okay. 1302, Declaration of Votes Cast for Proposition Two. The Board of Education hereby certifies the votes cast for Proposition Two, Capital Improvement Project. We have 1,501 yes and 337 no. May I have a first? Trustee Story, a second. Trustee Ramondo, all in favor? That's unanimous. 13.3, Declaration of Votes Cast for Proposition Three. The Board of Education hereby certifies the votes cast for Proposition Three, authorize the creation of capital reserve. Here? We have 1,338 yes and 457 no. May I have a first? Trustee Wallace? I told you we were gonna stumble through it. And a second, Trustee Ramondo, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Do you want to talk about the board seats?
Sure.
So, for the board seats, we have the two highest vote-getters we can declare. Emily Mitchell-Murrell has 1,144 votes and Clark Goodrich has 1,143 votes. So congratulations to you both. We will be administering the oath of office this evening. In terms of the third seat, there is a difference between the third and fourth highest vote casts of 46 votes and we have 55 affidavit ballots that have to be gone through tomorrow. So, as it stands... So, as it stands right now, Carolyn Jerome has 924 votes. Emily Sherry has 878 votes. Chrissy Taylor has 777 and David Wallace has 686. So, the third seat will be determined as soon as we get through all of the affidavit ballots.
When will that? Without some confusion, tomorrow?
That will be tomorrow. So, in the meantime, our deputy district clerk, Ms. Leclair, would like to administer the oath of office if Emily Mitchell Morrell would like to come up.
Emily? Come on down. You are the next contestant. Don't, never mind. So, I will say this, and then after I'm done, you will say that. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of your abilities?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much. Mr. Goodrich? That's your cheat sheet? This is my cheat sheet? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of your ability?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
So, I have to thank trustee Wallace and trustee Taylor for their service and I think trustee Goodrich and trustee Mitchell Morrell. Actually, we need to do a changing of the guard here so that they can participate in the adjournment, because you are now trustees.
Before we ask for the first to adjourn, the next meeting of the Antioa Board of Education is Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at Bennett. May I have a first to adjourn? Trustee Story, and a second. Trustee Goodrich. All in favor? That's unanimous.